Well, good evening, everyone. We will call the Monday, April 20, 2015 City Council Meeting to Order, First Order of Businesses' Roll Call and Determination of the Quorum. Charlene.
Scott, Drew, Lewis, Doyle, Wright, Estes, Nordstrom, Roberts, Waifunbuck, Laurenti. We have quorum.
Thank you. And we will now recognize Pastor Ron McGlaughlin from Hillsview Evangelical Free Church to deliver our invocation. You're welcome to participate, but not required.
Pray with me. Father God, we just thank you and praise you, Lord, for you being you and in control. And we thank you, Father, for allowing us to live where we live in a beautiful city of Rapid City. And, Lord, I thank you for the men and women on this council. I thank you for their willingness to lead and serve in the way that they do. And, Lord, I just pray for peace, and I pray for wisdom and discernment for the decisions to be made, and we'll trust you for the results. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now on to the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes or a motion? We have a motion by Scott and a second by Wright to approve the agenda as is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now are on to awards and recognition. So if our Veteran of the Month, Sherri Johnson, from Ward One could join me down front along with Ward One Council members Charity Doyle and Ron Waifunbuck. April 2015 Veteran of the Month recognition to Sherri Johnson. She was born November 30, 1945, in Newport News, Virginia, and moved to Rapid City when she was a year old. She attended and graduated from the school system in 1964. She was married a year after high school and spent two years in Bermuda. She left in 1967 and returned to North Carolina, where she lived for the next 38 years before coming back to Rapid City.
Sherri was employed by the North Carolina Social Services of Statistical Assistance for 10 years before joining the military. In 1977, Sherri joined the North Carolina Army Reserve, and in 1981 became an active member of the Army Guard Reserves. It was during this capacity that she was in the administrative field and became involved in the rifle team. I noticed her expert on her badge there. Sherri was assigned as an armor and worked for 12 years in recruiting and retention field. Her final duty assignment was working at an interstate transfer coordinator. During Sherri's career, she has been recognized for various awards. The Army Commendation Medal with two oak leaf clusters, Army Achievement Medal with four oak leaf clusters, Armed Forces Reserve Medal with two oak leaf clusters, Army Reserve Component Achievement Medal with two devices, Good Conduct Medal with a silver OLC and one bronze OLC, National Defensive Service Medal, NCO Professional Development Ribbon with numeral two, Army Service Ribbon, Army National Guard Award, Army National Guard Master Recruiter Badge, and Expert Shooting Badge, which was in basic training. And it takes a lot to be an expert, let me tell you. Sherri Johnson served a long distinguished career in the Army Reserve and National Guard components for 20 years until her retirement on July 31, 2001, as a Sergeant First Class, which is E7. During her enlistment in these Army units, Sherri graduated in 1990 from Campbell University in, I'm gonna take a shout out, this Boose Creek, North Carolina. She also instructed officers and enlisted personnel in the fine arts of shooting. Sherri is an active and life member of the National Rifle Association and the Retired Illicit Association, as well as belonging to the American Legion. Sherri has, Sherri has one son, Don, living in Rapid City, one son. In her spare time, she enjoys traveling and has completed numerous sea cruises to Dominican Republic, Bahamas, Cayman Islands, and other areas within that region. Sounds like a good time. Sherri Johnson's deep loyalty and love for her country make her an excellent candidate for the Veteran of the Month. Her example of service makes her deserving of this honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, Sherri Johnson. Thank you very much.
First up, Charlene Mitchell, and our City Finance Officer, Pauline Sumption, if you could come up, too. We are very proud to have Charlene in our midst. She's done a tremendous job for our city for the last 25 years, and it's very difficult to consolidate 25 years' worth of distinguished service down into a few minutes, but Pauline Sumption is going to try.
To put this all in perspective, Charlene started one month after I graduated from high school. Looking at this. I've had the pleasure of working for the city for eight years and have had time to work with Charlene before she came to my office, but because it's only eight out of the 25 years, I asked Marsha Elkins for some input as well, so I want to share what she says. Having read through it, there's a lot of things that still stand true today, and Marsha is just much more eloquent than I think I could ever be. So Charlene actually started for the Pennington County Planning Department and worked with the city that way, and it was brought into the city, and she became an employee of the city at that time. She has held multiple positions. First she started, let's see, I am shaking. Maybe I should put that there. So she started with the City-County Planning Office and started working with Marsha at the time. Marsha started shortly before they combined, is my understanding. And she's always had an eye for detail, and if anybody's filled out an application in my office for alcohol licenses, she is meticulous with making sure that everything is filled out correctly and completely. She is a godsend. She actually brought some mortgage experience to the technician position, then promoted to Planner One, and on the, for the county side of it. And she actually became administrative assistant when Patsy Horton, who's back again, moved to the attorney's office. So once she became the administrative assistant, she took minutes for multiple committees, planning commission, historic press. She has continued that by coming to my office and taking council minutes, which nobody really wants that job, so I appreciate that she takes it, as well as a bunch of committees that I have been assigned, the budgeting committee, the banking committee, the CIP committee, multiple different functions for us. She was instrumental in taking care of the budgets for the community planning department and then keeping track, making sure that they didn't overspend. So moving into the finance office was pretty much a no-brainer for us. She fits in quite well. To say that Charlene is a hard-working and dedicated employee just really would not be enough. She never says no. If you have a project, she will take it on, and she's not afraid to get in and to start something new or make something more efficient. I know a lot of our applications had been paper applications, and Charlene made sure that they got online where people can fill them out, and we can read the handwriting and makes it easier for all of us. She also just completed a, I think it was a six-week stint of doing two jobs while one of our employees was out on leave. She really does a lot in the background, and she's not afraid to tell people how it is, sometimes even when they don't want to hear it. And I know there's times when we go round and round about it, but I really appreciate her honesty and her opinion and her contributions, not only to my office, but also to the city, because she does more for the city than just the work inside my office. So with that, thank you, and I'm glad you're working for me.
with our fire chief, Mike Maltevern. We want to thank Lieutenant Hartman for his 24 years of dedicated service to our community. And now, in an attempt to condense 24 years into a few minutes, our fire chief, Mike Maltevern.
So I have about 45 minutes then. Well, Damon, we're gonna recognize two employees tonight, both lieutenants, and both started just a few months after I did. They've got right out, just over 24 years of service, and it's just that, it's been service, it's been dedication, commitment to our community, and not only the community itself, but to the Rapid City Fire Department. This man has worked very, very hard over the years to better the organization and make it certainly better than he found it. Damon served a number of years in our Fire Prevention Division, going out assisting with all the planning pieces that go in that community and making sure that, as the community grows and those things come to fruition in the city, that they're done safely. And so he represented our interests and the interests of all our citizens in making Rapid City a safer place. In that, then he returned to the Operations Division, where he's been answering emergency calls for the last few years. And I can tell you, this guy, literally, in his last few weeks, the last few months, I should say, has a list of things that he is accomplishing before he leaves. And it just goes to show you, again, his dedication and commitment to the organization as well as the community. He's working until his last day here. Just yesterday, Damon traveled across the state, participated in the services for fallen firefighter Steve Ackerman. About this time or a little earlier, he was folding a flag, presenting that flag to the family. So this guy puts it on the line. He does an exceptional job for the department and the community, and I certainly have a lot of pride in being able to serve alongside him for all these years. And we are gonna miss him. He's one of those people that just shows up at work. His work ethic, because of his age, he is, he's getting old. And so his work ethic is really such that, again, he sets a really good example for those younger guys like me and others. So, anyway, thanks, Damon. Congratulations.
Lieutenant Mike Wright, if you could come up, please, and Jerry Wright. And yes, there is a relation. You'll find out in just a minute. Jerry has bragged to me that he's been able to beat up his brother over the years. When I look at Mike, though, I find that hard to believe. So we want to take a moment to thank Lieutenant Mike Wright for his 24 years of dedicated service to the Rapid City Fire Department.
Well, what can I say? Just a little bit of the same sentiments I have about Lieutenant Hartman. Mike also is serving just over 24 years with the community. And again, the same level of dedication, and again, that same age bracket. He's actually older than Damon, so he's much older than I am, and again, has taught me a little bit of what he knows, which is still quite a bit. Mike actually has served on our rescue team, pretty much as long as he's been a career firefighter with the city. Mike has served in some form or fashion in our rescue station. That was at Station Five by Canyon Lake Park, and then he subsequently moved over to Station Three on the west side of town. And he's gone through several different changes over the years with our rescue team, and he's always just showed up, took the change in stride, and was there. And he's certainly been one of our senior people that, when there's something going down in the city and they need technical rescue, you want somebody like Mike there. And he's been that guy who's provided a great deal of leadership amongst those guys. The level of expertise has always been displayed. In that, he's also been probably one of the most humble people that's ever served in the fire department. It's amazing the, again, right, just ask him. Very humble and extremely attractive. Anyway, the guy just shows up, gets it done, and never asks for anything in return. This guy will serve his crew until, well, today was his last shift, and it was all about his firefighters, the guys serving under him. And if you ask any one of them, they will tell you, this guy took care of them, and that's what we ask of him. So with that, Mike, thank you.
You know, I just want to thank the city for a wonderful career and my family for standing by me. It's been an awesome place to learn and grow, and if a guy's gotta work for a living, I had a wonderful place to do it. I thank all my fellow firefighters that, you know, stood by me, helped me through the hard part, and I just really couldn't ask for a better life. Thank you.
Your brother would like the microphone. Can we give it to him?
Never put a microphone in a politician's hand. I just want to thank you for being a brother for 54 years.
that are here tonight for standing with them all of these years. Thank you again for coming. This is an executive proclamation on behalf of a grateful mayor and city council for all the Girl Scouts have done for our community and also for the Girl Scout cookies, which we all like. Whereas, it is all about the cookies. Whereas, April 19 through 25 marks Girl Scout Volunteer Appreciation Week, which honors all volunteers in Girl Scouting. And whereas, for over 100 years, Girl Scout volunteers have helped build millions of girls and women of courage, confidence, and character to make this world and this country a better place. And whereas, to the dedication, time, and talent of volunteers of different backgrounds, abilities, and areas of expertise, the Girl Scout organization thrives for girls in many settings. And whereas, through Girl Scouts' unique leadership development program, girls define leadership by making the world a better place, by discovering, connecting, and taking action in their communities. And whereas, Girl Scout volunteers offer opportunities available to girls in STEM, financial literacy, environmental stewardship, healthy living, self-expression, and other fields that can expand their horizons. Now, therefore, I, Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, and Jerry Wright, Council President, do hereby proclaim and applaud the commitment of Girl Scout volunteers that made to America's girls, and we proudly and loudly proclaim the week of April 19 to 25, 2015, as Girl Scout Volunteer Appreciation Week. Thank you, ladies.
At this time, we'd like to share our promise with you, if that's okay.
On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
I would also like to take this moment to thank all of you for your service to the community, but we did hear that you were a fan of Girl Scout cookies. And we would like to present you, and thank you for recognizing our volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you. He might share. He might share.
Thank you very much.
He's gonna be the first one out of the only group that's gonna share.
Down here, you want some? Oh, you can have some. I want everybody to know that I'm offering to share the cookies with the council before being asked. All right, we are now on to general public comment. We have a general public comment item on AmeriCorps, and we'll recognize Allison Rosenberg, Michaela Wayland, and McKinney. All right, come on up. If you could, if you wouldn't mind stepping behind the podium, so that way the people watching, if you go around.
Okay. So just before we begin, I think on behalf of our team and the rest of AmeriCorps and CCC, National Civilian Community Corps, we're honored to have been in the room with so many public servants and so many inspiring people. We hope to, one day, be able to hopefully lead a life in those footsteps, and maybe those Girl Scouts will grow up to want to be what we are and doing what we're doing as well. So, but thank you for having us. I'm Allison Rosenberg.
Perryon McKinney.
I'm Michaela Wayland.
And as I said, we're here just to give you some information as to what we are as an organization, how we have arrived in Rapid City, as said, from Philadelphia. We're from quite a ways away, and offer you, as I said, some information on how you can potentially integrate yourself and have the opportunity to work with an AmeriCorps team.
What is AmeriCorps? AmeriCorps, National Civilian Community Corps, is also known as NCCC, is a national service program that allows young adults ages 18 to 24 to serve the communities in intensive work with nonprofits, faith-based schools, community, local and non-local governments.
So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So we are actually here currently serving with Black Hills Works. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the organization, but it is serving persons with disabilities. We've been here since beginning of March. We actually leave on Wednesday, so thanks again for being able to get us in to speak with you. So as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local, state government, as well as faith-based organizations. So, as Perryon said, nonprofit organizations, local state government, as well as faith-based organizations.
AmeriCorps serves in five regions, and those regions are Sacramento, California, Baltimore, Maryland, Vicksburg, Mississippi, Benton, Iowa, and Denver, Colorado. And the areas we serve in are energy conservation, environmental stewardship, infrastructure improvement, natural and other disasters, and urban and real development.
All right, so this is actually my second term in AmeriCorps. This is my team last year. So, something that pertains particularly to you folks is that we served with Nebraska National Forest and Grasslands and helped them with some trail maintenance, as well as quite a few other things. Disaster Living Lands and Waters, which is a nonprofit based out of Illinois, cleaning out trash from the Mississippi River.
So, along with those five service areas, right now, we're considered working with urban and rural development, working with the community, the person who serves at Black Hills Work. We're actually preparing to go on to our next project. It's a 10-month program, and we're actually going to be serving as a fire team, doing prescribed burns, and we will be FFT2 certified and trained, so we're looking forward very much to that. So, we know that this is an area, in fact, we knew that there was one going on last week, so we can serve in many of those capacities. We're also first aid train and CPR train certified. So, what would an organization need to be a sponsor? There are some indirect costs, such as lodging, meals, tools, supplies. However, there is no fee for having a team and sponsoring a team. As I said, there must be project supplies, materials, the work of 40-hour work week, and we cannot be replacing current employees. So, that, along with the sleeping area, and a sponsor would be able to host a team, such as ourselves. We serve in teams from eight to 12 people.
So, the projects must address compelling community need, have clearly stated and well-planned tasks that fits our 40 hours a week, and have a site supervisor with us every day throughout the week. It must include the community throughout the project, including local volunteers, and it must be sustainable after an NCC team departs.
Sponsored should provide the necessary supplies, technical support, tools, and materials needed to complete the project, and full-time supervision.
So, like we said, NCC, we provide lodging, transportation, basic personal protection equipment. Like I said, we're capable of being a fire team, and we also have tools that we can bring from our campus and provide with our service here. So, just wanted to see if there is any questions. I know we do have some information requests for proposals to sponsor a team. I was going to give that one to Community Planning, Public Works, and I guess as well to you, Mr. Mayor. We brought one to your office. I know you're a little busy. It's a quite busy election season, but if there are any questions, we would be glad to answer those.
Thank you. This is the general public comment time, and so if we would want to have an exchange or dialogue, we would need to add this to the agenda or discuss it at another time. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your service to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now on to another general public comment item from Alan McPherson. Alan? Good evening.
My name is Alan McPherson, Rapid City. The video that you're going to see is pictures I've taken all the way around the Civic Center. And is he gone?
Thank you.
You're supposed to play a video. Up until last week, the only Rushmore Plaza Civic sign was on 8th Street on the berm. A new one was just added last week to the south end of the building. It really looks nice. The Civic Center was built in 1977, and I'd like you to really look at the pictures. In 1975, I started in retail business, five years an employee, and 30 years as owner and operator in Grand Forks, North Dakota. The three most important things about a business, retail business, is location, 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 and a prominent sign on the building. I have superimposed digital billboards on 5th Street and 8th Street, and also in large black letters, Rushmore Plaza Civic Center on the building in four different places. Brad Solen indicated the Civic Center has a ton of frontage, so there is plenty of allowable square footage for signs and also for large ground signs and digital billboards. The second page on the printout I have for you explains some observations and suggestions. The thing I see driving by there on 5th Street and 8th Street is you see a lot of cars in the parking lot, but there's nothing that indicates what event is taking place. So, today, I went by there, a lot of cars, my wife and I, and drove into the parking lot to ask somebody who was walking through the parking lot what event was taking place today. It'd be nice if there was a digital reader board indicating what's going on that day and anytime, or future events. So, I'd like you to take a look at that, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Alan, for coming tonight. We do not have any additional general public comment items. Have I missed anyone? Seeing none, general public comment is now closed. We now have a brief Arts Rapid City update from Anna Huntington. Anna?
Hello, thank you so much for having us. I'm Anna Huntington. I'm the Director of Arts Rapid City. With me is Jessica Miller. She's a collaborative strategist with Arts Rapid City. And I'm a little under the weather, so I'm going to have Jessica read the presentation tonight. But I just wanted to say thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to introduce you to our new organization.
Thank you. Arts Rapid City is a new organization that started up 18 months ago and grew out of the John T. Vicarvage Foundations, Collaborative for the Future of the Arts in Rapid City. It's a strategic planning collaborative for arts and cultural stakeholders in our community. Arts Rapid City's mission is to foster the continued growth of the arts and culture sectors and promote the creative work that makes our community a desirable place to live, work, and visit. Arts Rapid City is a tax-exempt 501(c)(3) organization, made possible through funding from the Bush and Vicarvage Foundations and through a partnership with Destination Rapid City. We share office space, leadership, and other resources with DRC and Main Street Square. Our board includes Pete Anderson, Jesse Abernathy, Brad Estes, Lauren Goodday-Gaiego, Jane Kramer, Pat Wiss, Dan Sefner, Pat Telesis, and Anna Marie Thatcher. Our focus is on building meaningful connections and providing tools that help the arts and the community as a whole to thrive. We aren't about making art or supporting a particular program or building. We work on connecting the community as a whole to local arts as a whole through our website and collaborative marketing and outreach. Looking at the big picture, Rapid City is a hub of creative enterprise. Our art and creative sector is significantly more robust than any similar nearby communities, including Billings, Casper, Cheyenne, Fargo, and Sioux Falls. With more than 250 working artists, nearly 350 arts-related businesses and nonprofits, and 1,300 people working in arts-related businesses, the creative industries represent more than 4% of all businesses locally and bring over $3 million in revenue to local government. The crowds that flock to theaters, historic sites, performance venues, museums also fill Rapid City's restaurants and shops. They generate an elaborate network of spending, about $17 per person, per event, and that excludes ticket costs. That can be leveraged to help transform and revitalize our community. We want to raise the visibility of Rapid City's creative sector so that more people, both locals and visitors, are engaged with it and benefit from it, and also that more people understand the economic and community value of the arts. Arts Rapid City provides the arts and culture sectors with valuable tools to increase revenue and expand audiences in three fundamental ways. Our primary tool, let me move the cursor, our primary tool is an innovative new website, artsrapidcity.org, that launched in September of 2014, and it serves as a free centralized events calendar, as well as a ticketing and general arts information resource. To create artsrapidcity.org, we partnered with every major arts organization in town, and the site puts a virtual roof over thousands of events, hundreds of independent artists, arts nonprofits, and arts businesses, and nearly 25 pieces of public artwork, helping make everything art easier and more likely to be found online. This website creates a one-stop entry point and welcoming invitation for locals and visitors into the local art and culture sectors. Artsrapidcity.org is user-friendly and mobile-friendly and is built on a platform developed by a nonprofit in Silicon Valley. After just seven months of being launched, artsrapidcity.org has three times more events than any other local event calendar, including tourism and media, and has delivered tens of thousands of page views and click-throughs to other local arts organizations and artists, helping expand awareness and help generate ticket sales. Here's a quick screenshot of the front page. Our second primary tool for the arts and culture sector is strong creative joint marketing for local arts organizations and artists. By marketing artsrapidcity.org across media platforms and running consistent and fresh social media and online mailing campaigns, we are marketing all of the arts in Rapid City. We work with multiple tourism, economic development, and media partners to share our calendar and push out the message about our vibrant creative sector locally and regionally. Our third tool is capacity-building programs for arts organizations and artists, such as marketing workshops focused on cooperation, partnerships, and increased operational efficiency. Our final focus is a collaborative community arts events and programming assistance. We've taken the lead on working with other arts nonprofits. Businesses and individual artists organize the Gathering of People, Wind, and Water. It's a native art market and cultural celebration at Main Street Square. It's the third annual gathering this July will feature 50 Native American artists selling work at the square, along with a full day of performances, everything from hoop dancing and jump groups to jazz and hip-hop. We collaborate with business and artists, the school district, and other organizations to organize Art Night Downtown. It's a Second Friday's Downtown Art Walk, and we do also help with Culture Shock, a Young Artists Festival. We also oversee the Teaching Artists Program. It's an artists-in-schools program in cooperation with the Rapid City Arts Council. We work closely with Destination Rapid City on other public art projects. We facilitate their work with artists and other public art professionals, along with the community engagement related to public art. We have multiple other joint programming efforts underway, including working closely with the Rapid City Arts Council on the upcoming cultural plan. For the community as a whole, we see our work uniquely creating two primary benefits. First, we foster friendly ease of access and an invitation into local arts and culture so that the entire community and our visitors reap the benefits of participating in a vibrant creative sector, not just established art patrons or members, but helping make the arts more fully integrated into public life in Rapid City. Second, we know that a thriving arts and culture sector leads to innovation, economic prosperity, and healthier communities. We hope that the Rapid City Council will join us as we bring, work to bring a unified voice to the arts in Rapid City and help people start thinking of arts and culture as an economic and community development engine for Rapid City. Arts Rapid City provides fuel for that engine through raised visibility and awareness, and the benefits ripple into the community as a whole. Thank you for your time. Is there any questions?
Any questions or motions from the council? We have a motion by Louis to acknowledge and a second by Estes. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much.
At your service. We're now on to item five, which is a Civic Center update. We'll recognize our Director, Craig Baltzer, and the Chairman of the Board, Jeff Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a subject that was continued from the last meeting, and so I just wanted to start out by kind of giving you an update on the after-action review, is what the agenda says today. As I said last time, we had a large meeting. I think some of you were in attendance at that meeting, and the outcome of that meeting blew my expectations away, so a lot came out of that. It wasn't easy. Some of it came hard, but it was all good. There was people at that meeting from both sides of the topic, and we got a lot of discussion. The meeting was led by Malcolm Chapman. He did a tremendous job at leading that meeting and keeping it on point. It was fabulous. Now, since then, what Malcolm has been doing has been keeping up with the follow-up with all that. He has met already with a lot of the folks that were either in the room or stakeholders that were involved in the project. For example, I know that he met with some of the Fix the Plan people, the five ex-mayors last week. I know he's met with some of the public. I know he's met with some of you up there. He's planning on meeting more people, such as people on our board and in the task force, and additional business people, and people from the community. With that, I'm expecting at some point in time to see that culminate into a report that he's going to report his findings, and there could be another large meeting, I think that possibly could happen out of this as well, that he might recommend that as well. So, that's where we're at with the after-action review itself. I did want to point out, since a lot of this discussion does revolve around some of the ADA and all that we have there, if I can figure out how to use... Case up? And then I push a button?
It's right here.
Okay. Okay, that's it. That's it. What I wanted to point out about this picture is that a concerned citizen came forward and saw that we had press parking in front of, closer to the door than the ADA parking. What we did was, at the time, there was three press parking, and they were the closest to the door. It was an easy fix. This is the kind of thing that, when it's pointed out to us, and everybody, all of a sudden, it looks like, yeah, that does look stupid. We did switch those around, and not only that, we limited the press pass, this is on the east side of the building, to one press parking only, instead of three, which created additional ADA parking. And one of the things that we're addressing with ADA parking in the parking lot is that this summer, we are going to, or expecting to, in August, to reseal the parking lot, and with that will come restriping. So, that's going to give us an opportunity to update our parking programs and our ADA parking programs, make sure it's all concurrent. I know that some of the van accessible is not up to code 100%. Signs are this high, and they need to be taller, things like that. So, that's going to be part of a more master plan in the whole parking lot this summer. Also, the board has moved forward with the decision to help with our process in starting with the Department of Justice program. And Jeff Bailey's here to speak a little more about that.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Craig. Yeah, I just wanted to offer a quick update on where we're at in working with not only the city attorney's office, but Public Works Department with regard to initiating our requirements as part of the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice. There's a couple of things that are very time-sensitive that we have to take action on, and our board has decided to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Department in the identification of a licensed architect who will be employed by the Civic Center to come in and validate as the different items on the checklists are completed, the timeliness of those completion, and that they are in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, according to the settlement agreement that the city signed with the Department of Justice. So, that process, we've identified a licensed architect, a local one, who can serve in that capacity and is qualified to do so, and those credentials have been forwarded... So that process, we've identified a licensed architect, a local one, who can serve in that capacity and is qualified to do so, and those credentials have been forwarded to the Department of Justice for review and, and acceptance, hopefully acceptance on that. We also, since the time clock has started, we have a couple of items that we'll be working on, in addition to some parking changes over the next three months. We have a couple of curb cuts, I guess, that need to be re-graded. The grade of them has been in question for some time, and so that will be some of the preliminary ADA fixes that we'll be working predominantly exterior of the building. The first step, as I said, would be the, the identification and the, the approval of the licensed architect in that process, as, has been initiated.
Thank you. Any questions for either of these gentlemen, or a motion? We'll go to Alderman Amanda Scott. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge and retain the floor.
And we have a motion by Scott, and a second by Nordstrom.
Thank you, and may I ask Jeff a question, please? Jeff, excuse me, I'm also feeling under the weather tonight.
Right.
When you say to identify an architect that can work with the ADA issues, what funding source does the, does the current Civic Center budget enterprise fund have this covered?
Well, we, we have agreed, because of the timeliness, the necessary response time that we have, that, that we would go ahead and absorb that within our budget.
And you've got room in your reserves in order to cover this? What's the estimated cost?
Twelve thousand dollars.
All right, and this is just to identify or mark off as the ADA issues are fixed or corrected?
Are fixed. They're called upon when they have been resolved, and this individual will come in, capture the, photographically, the change that has occurred, and, and verify that it is in compliance with, with the act. That's correct.
So what is the budget or availability within the budget to fix or correct a lot of the ADA issues? And is it throughout the entire complex, or are you concentrating on the Barnett Arena?
No, it would be throughout the entire complex. Some of the adjustments or the fixes over the next three months are very minor, and we would probably absorb those, but over time, we'll have to have a larger discussion with the council with regard to the funding of, and to what extent those, those remedies will be explored and made, those adjustments. Now, certainly, we need to keep in mind that the, the agreement that we have with the Department of Justice is one set of items that need to be addressed. The whole discussion of, in addition to, and others, is a separate matter. What we're doing right now is working along in satisfying the obligation that we've made to the Department of Justice for their review, their site review, and those infractions that they identified during their time here.
And has the Civic Center Board of Directors come up with an estimated cost of what those?
We have not. We have not.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity of, of taking some of these little things on, like when we restriped the parking lot, that we can make sure that there, if we can, you know, figure out a way to get handicap, van accessibility, those types of minor things that we can fix right away. I appreciate the science. But I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, and I would reference this to either party. Has anybody from the Civic Center Board reached out to the Rocky Mountain ADA that has, that did the initial interview there?
The, the group, I believe, that came in to conduct the review is meeting the challenge from Fort Collins, Colorado?
Right, yeah.
We've not entered into dialogue with them since, since their time here.
I'm not sure how to put this, but I have reached out to them on several occasions, and they have a really thorough understanding of what the Civic Center needs, and they work with the Department of Justice on a daily basis. They're, I mean, I, I would appreciate if the, the board would reach out to them and get them on the phone. They'd be more than willing to talk to you about the challenges that are posed from the agreement that we signed and bridging that gap between the Department of Justice and program accessibility at the Civic Center. Myself and a couple other councilmen here have had lengthy discussions with them in regards to that, and they're probably the most qualified people in the area. I mean, and, and they're willing to reach out to Rapid City if we reach out to them. So that being said, I'll let the council or the, whatever. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to applaud the gentleman for bringing it forward, both Craig and Jeff, bringing forward the updated report. I'm just kind of concerned about that, if we reach out to the Rocky Mountain group, that we'll start getting in the area of designing, and that's what I'd rather have the, the architect do instead, give us the first look at it. And so I appreciate your taking that first step, but can you kind of include me in a little bit about what the scope and the, what you're planning on doing with this architect?
Well, the architect, again, is limited to just satisfying, once any corrections are made, that they are in compliance with the federal act, and then capturing evidence that they have been made. So that's the, that's their only, they come over, we contact them, say the correction's been made, come on over, take a picture, examine it, tell us whether, and then they refer back to, they're, they're the alms budman for the Department of Justice, their eyes and ears, so that they don't dispatch people from, you know, a DOJ office to come and validate that the correction has been completed.
Thank you, Jeff. And, and what I'm hearing you say is, slow down, take it easy. We've got people coming in to take a look at this, that, that are capable of coming up and addressing some of the issues, and at the same time, we can still also have these public forums, as you suggested, or Greg suggested.
Absolutely. We, you know, there's an awful lot of things that have to be accomplished. At this point, I would guarantee you that the board is working diligently with the Public Works Department and our staff that have been signed to us from Public Works, as well as the city attorney, in making sure that we're meeting the expectations of the agreement. We've not done any design work. We have not even entertained any design work. We're not taking on the larger projects we still have. This is just a very preliminary step in comply, in, in the necessary compliance that we, that the city has obligated itself to with the Department of Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and I concur. We need to slow down a whole bunch more on this, and let's just take our time. We've got, we've got, well, a little time to work out some of these details, so I applaud you for your efforts and work, and, and keep going in that direction. So just, just let's slow down. Thank you.
Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr., yes, stay there, Jeff, thanks. Your, your commentary created a need for me to ask you a question. No, it's my understanding that, that when the Department of Justice people came here on, and it was considered a courtesy visit, that they really, they didn't really make a list. You said that this, the parking and the striping and this, some of the stuff we're doing is from their list. Actually, isn't it from our list? Didn't we, aren't we working off of a list that, that was made up by Forefront in, in the list that we, where we signed? I didn't know that.
Those are two different lists. The, the Department of Justice review generated one list, and as a part of the settlement agreement, it was a document about two inches thick, identified all the infractions that they had identified while their staff were on-site. And then they worked with Public Works Department and the city attorney's office and our staff at the Civic Center to triage those out and assign timelines to how they would be addressed. And that was all a part of the agreement that the city signed with the Department of Justice. And so the list we're talking, we're working on right now, absolutely separate from the Forefront list, absolutely separate. The front, Forefront list was, was created at the request of the Civic Center Futures Committee, who asked that additional information on how the facility, the Barnett Arena, just the Barnett Arena, could be brought into full compliance with the ADA.
So you're telling me in a two-hour courtesy visit, the Department of Justice created a document of infractions two inches thick?
That's correct.
Thank you. I didn't know the government was that efficient.
Well, it took them two years to get it back to us, too, councilmen, so.
Anything else? Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, you might as well stand there for a few minutes. First, I want to, to speak on what Richie, Richie said earlier about Rocky Mountain ADA. They don't do design. What they do is they come in and they help people like us get through this ADA, these ADA issues. That's what they, they're qualified to do these kind of things. One of the things that, that we have discussed while talking to them, and they have discussed to us, is Rapid City isn't the first city that's ever rushed into signing a DOJ without really knowing what they were doing. And they can help with that process. They can be the people that can bridge the gap with the DOJ. We believe that this list, everything we have to do on it, we don't have to. We have to make programs accessible. We have to fall, you know, if you're, you're given a list of a hundred things, their job is to come in and to make these programs accessible with maybe doing whatever percent of these things. But that's their job. That's what they do around the country, day by day. They're with, in contact with DOJ every single day. I, I think Ron Greg gave you the number to him, to Rocky Mountain ADA? Did you call them?
No, I didn't.
Because of, because you just have such a wonderful plan right now that nothing else can be looked at? I'm just curious.
A point of order has been called.
Well, I think that, I think that it's very important to look at more options than, than just one. You know, this is taxpayers' money. This is, you know, there are other options. We're just giving you some advice. That's all we are.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Let's stop our process for just a minute. We don't have points of order called very often, but when a point of order is called, any member of the council can call point of order, and then they're required to state their point of order. So who called the point of order?
I did, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead and state your point of order, please.
And my point of order is that when, when somebody is here publicly addressing us and answering questions, there's a, there's a line that we don't want to cross, which is, which is lead, are treading into accusations. I think there's just a different way. If there's information you want to request, that's fine. This man has spent countless hours serving the Civic Center Board of Directors, and we just need to be respectful of that, that's all. I just don't want anybody to get carried away.
Oh, I, I'd like to respond to Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts, if you consider my professional background, I've been a disability-related advocate by profession for the last twenty-five years. I was actually first appointed to, to city service for Rapid City under the La Croix administration. I am very well aware of what disability service advocacy is all about and what services are provided, but at this juncture, we're not looking to hire a firm to come in. The firm, the requirement that we have, according to the settlement that was signed with the Department of Justice, is that a licensed architect be employed at this point, and you're absolutely right. If, meeting the challenge, or the Rocky Mountain group does not have a licensed architect on, on staff, so at this point, we were just taking care of some of the preliminary necessities that came about as a result of the city's signing with the Department of Justice. We, we are working with the city attorney's office. I'm not here to challenge. It's not my role as a volunteer board member to challenge the...
And I agree with that, Jeff. And I'm, I'm sorry if I sounded a little bit curt on this.
If you'd like for me to call them, I will certainly extend that courtesy, but we've had a couple other things that have been kind of on our minds here.
Oh, I know. You've been extremely busy, extremely busy. I do understand that. I, I do want to bring one more point up while we were talking to them, because we've had extensive talks with them. According to them, and like I said, this is what they do for a living, we went forward with this settlement, but to do this, and they, they are one hundred percent in compliance with, even without the architect. They were kind of surprised that an architect was hired, because that does not have to be done when you're working with these professional firms. So, anyway, thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it, and I'm sorry.
Again, I would, I would defer to the city attorney's office for that, because I, I did not negotiate directly on behalf of the city of Rapid City regarding the, the settlement agreements.
Exactly, and that's one of the things I said from the beginning, you know, we probably should have spoken to a qualified ADA attorney before we got into this DOJ settlement. So, thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess, I guess we're just looking, maybe give you an option to, I would, I would really appreciate if the Civic Center Board would take the time to call Rocky Mountain. You're obviously familiar with them, and, and they're the ones that did the interview. They've done all the legwork. They have it with them, so they're real familiar with, with our situation, and I think it'll help give you, give us some correction on, on prioritizing, like, just what, kind of what Craig was mentioning earlier about, there's a lot of stuff that we're, we're not even doing anything with, that we could do on a daily basis, just to make it more accessible for handicap people, who had a conversation with the gentleman, that, so I think that's the direction that I'd like to see. Obviously, I don't have any control over the Civic Center Board, but if we could just give them a call, they've got all the, we're not hiring anybody to do any work. I don't know where that even, not, where that even came from. These people have already done the work. They're the ones that did the interview at Civic Center. They're aware of, then they advocate on a daily basis. You're probably more familiar with them than, than I am, obviously, from your background, but, so, reach out to them and see if you can be included in the conversation. I think that they would really, really, really give some direction, because obviously, our direction is, is kind of like in a circle.
Sure.
So, I appreciate it.
I'll, I'll contact them tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Thank you. Alderman Jerry Ray.
Make motion to acknowledge your report.
We have one.
All right, then I call a question.
Question's been called. Are there any objections to calling the question? All in favor of acknowledgement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion. We are now on public comment for items six through forty-one. I do not have any speaker request forms on items six through forty-one. Have I missed anyone? Last call, six through forty-one. Public comment is now closed, and now we'll go to councilmembers or staff for any of these items to be pulled for separate consideration. We're talking about items six through forty-one. Chad Lewis.
Item number thirty-five, please.
Item thirty-five. Charity Doyle.
I'd like to pull items number thirty-nine and forty-one for Amanda Scott to abstain, because she's not talking very well today.
Five, thirty-nine, and forty-one. Darla Drew.
Items seventeen and eighteen.
Items seventeen and eighteen. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Items ten and eleven.
Ten and eleven. Ten, eleven, seventeen, eighteen, thirty-five, thirty-nine, and forty-one. We have a motion to approve the balance. Motion by Lorenti, second by Nordstrom.
Thirty-five.
It's already been...
I'm sorry, thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Since we're going to do thirty-five.
Too late, train left the station. I'm kidding. Well, that's okay with the motion maker? Steve Lorenti? And the seconder? Who is the seconder? Who is the seconder? Richie? Okay, well, it's okay with yourself? All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are on item number ten, and a great tragedy has occurred. Amanda Scott has lost her voice, so we'll go to Charity Doyle to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ten is to approve change order number five to Skull Construction Services for Canyon Lake Dam Reconstruction Project for an increase of six thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Doyle, second by Louis. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for our Public Works guys. Number ten and eleven look like they're congruent, basically, so that's why I pulled them both. I didn't want to disapprove one. My questions are, just to, there's, there's change orders on both these, if they could explain that, and then just kind of give us an update of where this whole project is.
If you could just explain both at the same time.
Yes, I, excuse me, I sure will. Two different change orders here. Some of them are just minor adjustments in quantities based on the actual site conditions that, that were encountered on the site. I'm, I'm looking at the second one here as well. That included some additional erosion control that was necessary to handle some of the flows that were not able to be handled through the original bypass. They were still flowing through the lake, and throughout this project, we have encountered issues with sediment being picked up through, by the additional flowing carried downstream, and, and with that comes problems with water quality. The DENR was out here on a weekly basis. We did testing on a weekly basis, and they monitored it very closely. So we made all the efforts that we needed to, to make sure that we stayed in compliance, and we did not look at, at facing fines, which the city has seen in the past with past projects there in Canyon Lake. Kind of, as, as far as where we are today, they are finishing up some of the removal of the bypass piping. I believe all the concrete on the spillway is, is poured at this point. We've got a, a little bit of minor repair work that they'll be finishing up here. We have reduced the flows out of Pactola for about a two-week period. I think that'll go through the end of this week, and then we will start increasing the flows out of Pactola. One major thing that we were not able to accomplish is the sediment removal. If you recall, the city council had set aside some additional funds for the additional sediment removal, where you also received a, a grant from the DENR, and what I've told those organizations, and I... And what I've told those organizations, and I'll tell you as well, is that Public Works Department is committed to getting the silt removed, but it's really going to have to be under different means and methods. It will probably have to be under a separate contract. We just could not get in there with the way that we originally had intended to do the silt removal and still stay in compliance with those water quality issues that I was just mentioning. So, you know, that's where we are today. It's generally on budget and on time. We wanted to be able to pass those flows over the spillway here for the irrigation season, which is just around the corner.
So, Mr. Mayor, that led to another question. So, we're not going to dredge the lake since we have it all dried out and whatever I thought it was? I mean, what caused or prompted that to not happen?
The lake itself really did not dry out to a level where we could get in with equipment and get it removed and not run the risk of some of that sediment being carried downstream. And keep in mind, during this project, we still had a substantial amount of flow that was still flowing through the lake. And anytime we had any kind of movement in or near those flows, it stirred that silt up. It's extremely fine silt. Even just the fish moving around will stir it up and put us into compliance issues. So, based on our discussions, both with our consultants and with the contractors, it just, it was not worth putting the city at risk of up to a quarter million dollar fine just because we had such an urgency to get the silt removed. There's other ways to do it. And our conversations with some of the organizations who are really pushing for this, I think are on board and understand the situation we were under.
Anything further?
No, it just poses more questions. Thank you.
Alderman Darla Drew.
I'm speaking on behalf of Amanda Scott. Are these funds that are here for these change orders, are they considered in the contingency fund?
We did have some funds that were set aside for additional pumping, and I think this will fall within that, within that level that we had received.
So, you won't need a supplemental?
Hopefully not.
Anything further? Alderman Jerry Wright.
Jerry, I'm not sure I heard it, but I think that one of the reasons we were not able to dredge or remove the silt was because of the high inflows caused by the groundwater discharges up into the limestone caused by what years prior to this. And there's no way of controlling it, and there were discharges from reservoirs at Pactola and Deerfield for flood control. So those are things way beyond our control, and that's why it was because the exceedance, the flows were in exceedance of what we normally would anticipate in a normal year, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Walther Storf, another question for you on the sediment removal right in front of, I'm not sure if it's called the face of the dam, but the upstream in that area where there's a large area with a lot of weeds that grow up in there, and we usually have skiers coming into that area. And are we able to do anything with that at all?
We did not do any silt removal at this time in those areas.
Thank you.
Alderman Darla Drew.
I make a motion to approve.
We already did. Would the motion maker like to include 11 as part of this? And we'll just-
What?
10 and 11. And that's okay with the motion maker? Is it okay with the seconder? Okay. We have a motion to approve items 10 and 11, both change orders on this item. One is $6,963, and the other is $89,374. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 17 and 18 are both related, so we'll also take those at the same time as well. Charity.
Would you like me to read them both?
Yes, please.
Okay. Item number 17 is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign resolution number 2015-036, a construction fee resolution for South Berry Pine Road Sanitary Sewer Extension Project number 11-1957. And item number 18 is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign resolution number 2015-037, a construction fee resolution for South Berry Pine Road Water Service Line Project number 11-1957. Make a motion to approve both.
Motion by Doyle, second by Wright. Any discussion? Alderman Darla Drew.
Yes, I have a question or two for Terry Walther Storf over here. Terry, so I had a question from a constituent. Is this covering the west side of Berry Pine as well? Because this particular person thought they were out of the city limits and that they wouldn't have to pay the fees for, I think it's almost $3,000 for the sewer line and $830 per acre on the other water service. So, is that the case? That they're different, you know, they're still out of the city limits? I knew at one time they were.
These fees are set up so that when they connect, these establish the fees that we actually charge them when the connection's made. So, if they are outside of city limits, but they have the ability to connect, if their septic system starts having a problem, that's the point when they'll have to connect to the city sewer, and that's when the fee would be charged. They would have to annex into the city-
Okay.
-as part of that as well.
So, this won't be part of what they have to pay upfront? This has nothing to do with the west side at this time?
Yeah. None of these are upfront costs. These are costs that we recoup at the time that they connect.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Floor has been yielded. We do not have any further discussion. We do have a motion to approve both items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 34, this is a legal and finance committee item. Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 34 is to acknowledge discussion on parking on Kansas City Street near the Public Safety Building. I move to acknowledge.
A motion by Lewis to acknowledge, and a second by Wright. Any discussion? Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that we did get an email from Hanny Shaffey, and I'm just kind of reading through it one more time here, that he needs a little bit more time to allow for more discussion. So, if it's possible, could we ask Mr. Shaffey to kind of delay this until we do the entire downtown plan and study? If there's any changes going to be considered with that?
We're just acknowledging this tonight.
Hey. I just wanted a clarification. This could be included into the downtown plan instead of, because he's asking for this to be delayed, and I'm not sure what that means.
My understanding is he's going to be visiting with county and bringing back an update to the council. Another option would be to continue this item for a date specific, maybe two or three months out.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield.
Alderman Jerry Wright.
I just shared with council leadership, I didn't send it to everybody, because I know that we've sent too many copies and too many inquiries or information, and it becomes a questionable message. But I do think it's high time that we consider finding a person or persons to be the overall manager of our parking program, because we are seeing within recent months a lot of confusion in requests, and all legitimate, but nobody orchestrating. We have people worrying about finance, we have people worried about maintenance, we have people worrying about enforcement. I'm not asking that we decide to do. I think we need, and maybe it's part of this plan that Richie's talking about, but somewhere or other, we need to have a person or persons in charge of this overall to answer these questions, as they all are legitimate, so we can get an orchestrated solution. Future thought. Thank you.
Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but we're not making any action tonight. We're just acknowledging a report. Am I correct?
Yes.
If you want to see a parking report, there's one that was distributed from Mayor's office that was, so it might have some reference to what you're talking about. Alderman Wright, thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is to acknowledge item 34. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 35.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 35 is acknowledged discussion on 10-hour meters on Kansas City Street from Sixth Street to Mount Rushmore Road, and at the request of Mr. Seffner, I move to table this item.
Motion by Lewis and a second by Roberts to table item 35. There is no discussion on a table motion per procedures. We'll proceed directly to a vote. All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 39, this is a bid item, and we'll go to Chad Lewis to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 39 is to approve award total for ready mixed concrete opened April 14th, 2015, to the lowest responsible bidder, Pete Lanan Suns, Inc., in the amount of $84,725. I move approval.
Agreed.
And we'll have an abstention from Amanda Scott. So we have a motion by Lewis and a second by Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and the abstention by Amanda Scott is noted. Item 41.
Item 41 is approve award of total bid for limestone gravel opened April 14th, 2015, to the lowest responsible bidder, Simon Contractors, South Coast Doing Businesses, Hills Material Company, in the amount of $56,785, excuse me. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Wright, and we'll also have an abstention by Amanda Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and the abstention by Alderman Amanda Scott is noted. Okay, that ends the consent items. We are now on public comment for items 42 through 83. And we have three speaker request forms on items 50 and 51, and no request forms on any of the other items. And so, we'll proceed with, first with Tom Allen on items 50 and 51. And this is relating to the hobby beekeeping items. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to personally thank Ms. Carla Cushman, Assistant City Attorney, who worked so hard on this over the winter. She did a lot of research, and I think came up with a couple of ordinances that will not only protect the public at large, but also will allow the hobby beekeepers to have their bees in the backyard. We can't keep all of the bees out of Rapid City. There's a lot of them in the outlying area, and they're going to come to town wherever there's anything to, for them to forage on. So, I think I would recommend the council, I would encourage the council, to look favorably on these two ordinances and pass them when the time comes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We'll now go to Jerry Owens, also on these same two items. Mr. Owens.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. What's left of our audience? You guys chased them all the way. It's hard for me to make a big impression if I don't have anybody to talk to. But anyway, my name is Jerry Owens. I'm a beekeeper here in Rapid City. I'm the founder and past president of the Want To Be Beekeepers Club. We have one of the largest clubs in Rapid City with a high attendance at our meetings. Our meetings consist of education, information, problem solving, for all areas of hobby beekeeping and beekeeping in general. I would like to compliment the city council for their work and consideration for the keeping of bees within the city limits. My special thanks go to the city attorney's office for the amount of time spent rewriting the ordinance to potentially meet with everybody's satisfaction. We have met with them, and they were very, very open to our suggestions, and we were able to come to what we felt was a reasonable positive outcome for that. Over the past 11 years, we've gotten good press for our efforts on educating people of all ages and walks of life on beekeeping, from TV stations, radio stations, library, journey museum, schools, garden clubs, home shows, and the community education system. I mention these in particular because my next, my next item here is an article that appeared in a paper yesterday from the local newspaper, where they indicated that there wasn't an education program for teaching beekeepers how to keep bees. We have spent countless hours holding seminars, using the community education system to have classes. We've talked to, like I mentioned, the schools. We've done a tremendous amount of work to educate the people of Rapid City and surrounding areas on what it takes to do beekeeping, the benefits from it, and the things that we need to look out for. Unfortunately, the Rapid City Journal chose the day before this meeting to write an article which attacks all the work that we have done and participated in. Of course, they're entitled to their opinion. I only wish that whoever had written that article, or whoever did write that article, was better educated about bees and beekeeping. That article was filled with all kinds of erroneous information. And it was a very negative article, filled with inaccuracies. The local beekeepers hadn't, have not had an opportunity to respond to the contents of the article, since it just came out yesterday, and the meeting is here today. We would like to have an opportunity, if needed, no, we would like to have an opportunity to make a presentation to anybody that would like to come to our meetings to help educate you on what beekeeping is all about. I think that you would find it very informative.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll now recognize Robert Ashheim, also on this item.
My name is Robert Ashheim. I'm from Belle Fouch. The reason I put myself on the agenda is I'm the president of the club for this particular year. One of my major concerns is I feel that Rapid City will provide the leadership for other communities throughout the area. We, our beekeeping club has members that range Rapid City all the way out to Wyoming, down to South Acaster. We have members up in Lead and Deadwood area, and I would like to help, whatever is possible, to ensure that these people, you people, provide the leadership for these other communities as well. We know that the documents that was provided, they are basic standards that was used in other communities throughout the United States, some major metropolitan areas, Washington, DC. The White House has honeybees on the White House lawn that they're harvesting honey from. And other people have high-rise apartments where they have bees on the lofts, on their balconies, and the like. So I really appreciate anybody who has a real problem with this to sit down with the club, or anytime individually, that we will sit down and give them a complete education, whatever they need. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We do not have any more speaker request forms on items 42 through 83. Have I missed anyone? Last call. Public comment is now closed. We are now on to ordinances. Item 42, Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 42 is an ordinance, number 6040, an ordinance to fix an error in the section 15.14.150 of the Rapid City Municipal Code concerning the International Property Maintenance Code. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 43.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 43 is second reading of ordinance 6041, an ordinance to repeal the International Existing Building Code by deleting chapter 15.15 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Drew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. A note for the record that we deleted a section of the code just now.
Alderman Lewis. Item number 44 is a second reading of ordinance 6042, an ordinance demanding a climatic table in international building code by admitting section 15.12.580 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Drew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 45.
Item number 45, second reading of ordinance 6045, an ordinance to increase the amount of time allowed on on-street parking areas in downtown, and repeal the graduated penalty for timed parking violations by admitting sections 10.44.010, 10.44.070, and 10.40.25, excuse me, 205 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I move approval.
Agreed.
Motion by Lewis, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion by Lewis, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Forty-six.
Item forty-six is authorized mayor and finance officer, signed resolution twenty fifteen dash zero four four, a resolution to set the amount of penalties and late fees for parking violations. I move approval.
Second.
The motion by Lewis and second by Drew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Forty-seven.
Item forty-seven is first reading of ordinance sixty forty-three, an ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning within described property as requested by advanced engineering for T.J. Wontanovitz for rezoning from low-density residential district one to low-density residential district two for property generally described as being located east of the intersection of Hofer Avenue and Churchill Street. I move approval.
By Lewis, second by Drew. Any discussion? Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spent some time over there in this area and this is potential for a huge drainage issue and I want to make sure that we're on top of it. So I guess I'll refer to our Public Works Department to see what plan, what plan we have in place to address this. This, I mean, there's runoff coming over the top. Most of the drainage over there is over the roads. This is right at the bottom of a hill and almost adjacent to a drainage ditch and then it drains. I'm fear that the rooftops are going to drain down into the apartments that are to the actual east of this area. So I'm hoping that we've made some really, really big commitments to drainage over there.
Terry, go to our Public Works Director, Terry Waltersdorf. Think we can get some answers on this at committee?
I'll do my best here. I know that they are required to submit a drainage plan as part of the development plans. I really don't know the, a great level of detail, but I do know in discussions with Ted Johnson from our office, it's one of the things that they have scrutinized heavily on this particular development.
If we could bring a little bit more information to committee when this comes back to the second reading, please.
We will.
All right.
We still have a plan coming forward. This is not approving anything, then?
This is first reading, so we got time.
Then that knows under the camel's nose under the tent, so.
The second reading is when this takes effect.
Then they'll have the, we'll have the plan, then we'll know exactly what's going to happen over there.
We'll have an update at committee next week. And if you're not satisfied with the answer on that, then there'd be an opportunity to continue it further.
Thank you.
Anything further? Terry Waltersdorf.
Just to clarify, this does not go back through a committee. This came out of the planning board. This is a zoning issue.
Uh, thank you. So can you have some, can you have some information for us at second reading, which gives you two weeks?
Yes, we will. Positively.
Positive. Okay. Anything further? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Forty-eight.
Item forty-eight is first reading of ordinance sixty forty-four, an ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning within described properties requested by Larry and Mary Stevens for rezoning from general agricultural district to park forest district for property generally described as being located at forty-seven eighty-seven in Chantapine Drive. I move approval. Forty-seven eighty-four, pardon me.
Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Forty-nine.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. Item forty-nine is first reading of ordinance sixty forty-seven, supplemental appropriation number two for two thousand and fifteen. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Weifenbach. Any discussion? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Pauline a question, please? Pauline, looking at this, and I was trying to track it down through the information as it is written, but when you get down to the bottom section of the transfers, I'm having a hard time figuring out where the transfer from sewer fund for two hundred and fourteen thousand rounded went to the solid waste fund in that amount. I think it, there may be a debit credit type thing going on that I can't track it.
What happened is there was actually a miscoding in two thousand and fourteen from one fund to the other. So the sewer fund should have paid for something and it came out of solid waste. It was coded to the wrong fund. And because it happened last year, we have to do a transfer of cash this year to take care of that so that the money is actually coming from the correct fund.
Is that outlined in the, in the comment page? Because I had a hard time finding that on the last page, on the comment page.
We typically don't do comments on the transfers, so that's why you would not have seen that.
Okay, then the only other one that I couldn't trans, or couldn't track down was the Meadowbrook Golf Fund transfer from the Enterprise Fund to General Fund. What, what is the eighty thousand dollars covering?
It should be from the General Fund to the Meadowbrook, and that was previously approved. That needs to be reversed. I missed that when I was double checking that.
If that can be corrected before second reading, I yield the floor.
Absolutely.
So we'll keep it as is for first reading. It'll be corrected for second reading. Good catch. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty.
Item fifty is first reading of ordinance sixty thirteen, an ordinance to permit hobby beekeeping residential areas by amending section seventeen point zero four point zero three five, seventeen point zero eight point zero two zero, and seventeen point one zero point zero two zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I move approval. I'd like to attend and retain the floor.
Motion by Lewis, second by Wright, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing has been brought to my attention that I find is probably pertinent to this discussion, and that is the idea that the, this might be against covenants in certain subdivisions, however, they don't, they lack the HOAs to, active HOAs to actually enforce it. So there's some way we could make provision that allows, if it's not allowed by covenants and so people don't have to go hire a lawyer to, you know, to deal with it as opposed to there is an uncovered by covenants. I guess if that makes any sense for staff or anybody to address that too. But just in fairness to those who have a covenant that doesn't allow certain things, you know. Yeah, but generally speaking, covenants rule the land. I understand, you know, are the rule of the land. But people have to hire a lawyer in order to enforce them if the HOA is not active. So I'm just trying to figure out where, if there's any way we could, I guess my question's for you, Joel. Does that make any sense?
We'll go to our city attorney, Joel Landeen. Joel?
Well, we generally try to stay out of covenant disputes, especially, you know, where it usually comes up if somebody comes in and applies for a building permit and maybe there's a covenant that prohibits it, but otherwise complies with city ordinance. Basically because we don't have access to every covenant or don't want to have to go look at every covenant to make sure. And then if we miss something, what's our liability? So we generally try to stay out of covenants. But yeah, I mean, covenants are put on for a reason, but that's an agreement between the landowners that they will follow those rules and typically we.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that there's restrictive covenants on everything. Some subdivisions are more restricted than others. I'm just, I'm just, it was brought forward to me by people who live in an area that don't allow bees currently by the covenants, but they have no active HOAs. And if they could bring those covenants forward to the city for perhaps enforcement, or I don't know.
Well, I know that this has been discussed with Carla and we could use it if it was in conjunction with licensing where we felt comfortable is, if it was in conjunction with licensing, then if we could, it could be demonstrated there was enforceable covenants, then we could, if it was referenced, then use that as a basis to not either not grant or to revoke the license at that point.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just, the big concern is, ma'am, obviously, I mean, I'm fine with the bee thing, obviously, but I just want to make sure that people have redressed and then I want to, you know, there, most places are going to have an HOA that are active, but some subdivisions don't have it. They have just covenants. So that's why I'm trying to address that problem. So that's my problem. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderwoman Darla Drew. Darla.
Um, yes, I'd like to address one of the wannabe presidents that are here. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Step over here, sir.
Yeah, I have seen some of your presentations. I saw one at the West Boulevard Association one year and also here while we tried to decide this issue. And it comes to my mind that we had a discussion about swarms and someone brought this up with me, a constituent. I was worried about the inevitability of a swarm, you know, coming to an area that they're not welcome and how that situation is handled. I understand you have some people in your association that can go and capture those swarms. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Jerry does, I don't know, I mean, he captured last year. Tom has captured swarms. We get a phone call, we send them out. Significant number of these swarms actually are not swarms. They're yellow jacket hornets or wasps, okay? So we captured the bees and that's what we take care of.
Okay, so if somebody has some other type of infestation, that's, that's their problem. And I understand that. So if you have a bee swarm, I think I'd almost like that to be part of the ordinance and I'll talk to Carla Kushman about that because I'd really like to have us have some kind of recourse if we do have a swarm that we know we can contact you guys and you'll take care of it.
Ma'am, part of our agenda items for the last two meetings, we have a proposal that we're working on. First off, when we get a swarm, we don't kill it. We, we capture it and we utilize it someplace else. But where we have phone numbers for specific areas, remember the club covers basically this whole basin around here, that there will be people that you can call who will address the swarm and capture it as well as on our side over here, who's ready to accept the swarm if they got it. We will formalize that procedure. It's been written out in draft format and we'll provide it to you if that is your request.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, if you want to add something, you have to do it here. You can't do it. Right, talking to the point of the attorneys, talking to Carla.
I have to talk.
You have to do it up here. Am I correct on that belief? She can't just go add it behind the scenes and then bring it.
No, I don't want to. I just wanted to discuss that with Carla.
I thought you wanted to add it.
It can be discussed with the city attorney and then brought to committee where it can be added by the motion tonight.
Yeah, and maybe I was a little bit out of order there, but this is something that I was contacted about that is a problem. So this is.
Thank you. Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion to include in item number fifty the provision that it is beekeeping can be restricted to single dwelling lots.
Okay, we have a, this is an amendment. Take this as, as an amendment to the motion on the floor that it would be restricted to single dwelling lots.
There was a lot of, oh, sorry, Mayor, may I retain?
Go to the floor, yeah.
Thank you. There was a lot of discussion when I streamed the legal and finance meeting last week. And since this is a new ordinance and there is not a lot of repercussion for anyone who is troubled by having a beehive within their neighborhood, it just seems to me that to err on the side of caution and to, you know, bring this item to the public in a very, very positive manner and be able to address it. And I understand the wannabe club has a lot of education, but I think it behooves us as governing body to make sure that we have a positive reaction to any new ordinance that we bring forward. And I think restricting this to the single-family dwelling is not too cumbersome. And I don't think a lot of people in a townhouse or a high-density residential area would really appreciate not being able to have a say in it. I yield the floor.
Thank you. We're now debating the amendment to the, the item or to the ordinance. And this amendment, if passed, would limit to single-family residential only. Okay, everyone understands the amendment. We're now debating the amendment. Steve Laurenti, would you like to discuss the amendment?
Yes, Mayor, I would.
Okay.
The amendment only. If I could have somebody from the honeybee group, that would be great. I was wondering, sir, thank you for coming up to answer my question on this particular issue and the amendment itself. Do you have an opinion on that? How, do you like it, dislike it? If you could express your opinion on that, if you would, please.
If I could elaborate just a little bit before I answer that question based upon some comments that was made. In the last three decades, I think that there has been one complaint about bees. And that was a year or two ago.
Sir, we're talking about the amendment. You'll have, you'll have a chance in just a moment to talk about the underlying motion. We're talking about the amendment. So Alderman Laurenti's question is whether or not you're okay with it going to single-family only and not townhomes and duplexes.
And if you could, that would be great, sir. We are familiar with that one complaint and the nature of it, so I just want you to know that as well. So if you could answer my question, that would be great.
Right. I, in essence, I agree with that. There are some peripheral things. In other areas in the nation, they allow, like on patios and high-rises, they have them on the roofs in Paris. So, you know, they've proven in other areas that this is not a problem. But we've got to understand that every beekeeper needs to take responsibility for where they put their beehive and how they conduct themselves with their neighbors.
So for Rapid City, do you think this amendment is too limiting? Is it going to, is it, you know, for your club and, you know, for the people that are already beekeepers in Rapid City? In my opinion, this is kind of an acknowledgement of the fact that they already exist, that this isn't too limiting for you and your group, limiting it to single-family dwellings.
What do you guys think?
Uh, we need to get the comments on the record, so if we can have one. Alderman Laurenti, if you could direct your question to who you'd like to have it answered.
Any one of the group from the honeybee group would be fine. If he, if he can help answer the question, that's great.
We have one person in our club that lives in a duplex.
In the city limits?
So that would be the exception to that rule.
In the city limits, sir?
City limits, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
The generalities.
Okay, we'll now go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carla, can I ask you a question? We're speaking about ordinance sixty thirteen, correct?
Yep.
Could you point out to me where it says anything in there other than single-family dwellings? I really don't see it.
Well, it's not in here, but if you go to the medium-density residential section, it says that all permitted uses in low-density residential are allowable in medium-density residential. And it says the same provision in the high-density residential zoning district. So it's only really discuss, the detached single-family dwellings are a good example. That's allowable in low-density residential, and then it's incorporated into the medium and the high-density residential. So in the same way, the hobby beekeeping provision would be incorporated in the medium and high-density residential sections, just by being included in the low-density.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I didn't, yeah, but I didn't see that explained in the, I might have missed it. But I do agree that I, I agree with what Alderwoman Amanda Scott brought forward, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderwoman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just quickly want to say that I'm not a hundred percent sure how I'm going to vote on the the ordinance as a whole, but I will, I, I'm going to vote for this amendment. That'll get me closer to supporting the ordinance. Thanks.
Voting on the amendment only. Does everyone understand the amendment? Single-family only. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and item fifty or ordinance sixty thirteen is amended accordingly. And we are now discussing the amended ordinance and we have a motion on the floor to approve of that. So, no, we already have a motion. So any further discussion on, on this item? Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, if I may, have a little bit of latitude as an educational component because there was the article yesterday and I'm sure people viewing this that are hearing it for maybe the first time might have some concerns. I spoke to a beekeeper and interestingly enough, I mean, she's kept bees for about four years. They're right up against her home and she lives across the street from an elementary school that will remain unnamed. She has, so approximately a hundred thousand bees live on her property and there have been no incidents. So this kind of puts in perspective, that's three hives, I believe. I was surprised to hear that. Also surprised to find out how much honey a hive produces. Ten gallons per hive. That was, that was quite shocking. But I, but I, I think that it, it does speak to, you know, I, I garden. I get right down in there with them. They don't bother me. But like I've mentioned before, I have a sister that is deathly allergic. So it's, it's, it's that balancing act. But I will say that it was quite enlightening and I would encourage anyone who does have concerns to get with one of these beekeepers and just ask them questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Brad Estes.
Thank you. Question for Carla Kushman, if I could. Carla, in this ordinance, it speaks to nuisances and things of that nature. Who's the judge of whether or not we, we've come to a point where in somebody's mind, a neighbor's mind, that it's a nuisance? Who's, who's going to administer this thing?
Well, I think you're actually talking about the next ordinance, which is the changes to title six. I can answer the question or we could talk about it then.
Well, it says nuisance prohibited in this. I, I guess I'm just trying to figure, I guess, does anybody else want to know the question? How are we going to administer this thing? And who's, who's, in whose judgment does, does something become a nuisance?
Well, generally, as with other situations. Well, generally, as with other situations around the city, complaints about these kind of things are made to code enforcement. And if they rise to a certain level, they make their way to our office. And nuisance is a legal determination. There are legal parameters and legal processes to declare something a nuisance. And so it would really be code enforcement and the attorney's office working together.
Okay. Mr. Allen, could I ask you a question? Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I'm trying to get myself into a position where if I go to McDonald's tomorrow morning and some mother comes up to me and asks me to explain this ordinance and why I supported it. But let's say you have a young couple and they have two, three children, and one of them is extremely allergic to bees, and they've lived in their home for five, six years, and their neighbor sells the house next door to them, and a hobby beekeeper moves in next door, and this ordinance allows that hobby beekeeper to put hives within 15 feet of their house.
Okay.
This lady's going to be scared to death.
Well, that's part of the educational program.
But, and, you know, and I'm sitting here going, I'm assuming you're going to tell me that everything's going to be okay, and she's going to be safe, and she's going to say, well, how come those guys wear a suit then?
Well, unless that child gets inside of the beehive, they're relatively safe. Okay?
Okay.
Beekeepers wear the suits when they get inside of the hive and they start working with a bunch of 60,000 P.O.'d bees. So, but one of the things that we try to do through education of our beekeepers is to have them work with their neighbors in placement and concerns and so forth. And in most cases, like Councilwoman Doyle mentioned, they're, they're close to all kinds of municipal areas, and there haven't been any issues, or relatively few issues that I've, I'm familiar with. What we're also trying to do is work with the 211 folks to have, if somebody does have a problem with the swarm or that sort of thing, that they, if they call 211, 211 can tell them whom to contact to get rid of the swarm and that sort of thing. So, and there's, there's no way to tell if that child gets stung by a bee that it belonged to that hive or that it was really a honeybee. Too many people, when they get stung, it's a bee sting, where in fact, it's probably a yellow jacket or a wasp's sting that that person has gotten. So.
Sure. But we're definitely increasing the density within, you know, and I appreciate that you guys, you know, you guys represent a group of people and you want to work with the neighbors and stuff. But, but the bottom line is, is that, is that the neighbor, you know, the ordinance says, whether the neighbor agrees or not, you can set these hives within 15 feet of their home, you know?
But there's, there are some restrictions that.
Sir, if you could wait. Alderman Estes has the floor, so.
I'm sorry.
So, but, so that was just my comment. I appreciate, you know, the tenor of you guys is a willingness to get along. But the bottom line is, is that once this ordinance is passed, if the neighbor says, I don't want them there, a hobby beekeeper, as long as it meets the 15-foot rule, they can put them there, you know, and there's nothing. So then I'm trying to, so then I'm trying to figure out, so maybe we could have a situation where, where, where we don't have a neighbor that's real happy. And so then, so then what constitutes a nuisance? And that's what I was trying to get at. Is a nuisance somebody that, next door that doesn't like having a hobby beekeeper next to them? Because, you know, just for whatever reason. They might have fears, they might be unfounded fears in your mind, but, but they're darn sure legitimate in their minds. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the, again, like the soils test, the mechanics of this deal, and who gets to decide their nuisance and how it's going to work and, and how we're going to deal with this in the, once it's enacted. So, and if you want to respond to that.
I couldn't respond to that because I'm not within the decision-making process of what constitutes a nuisance. But I do know that in that ordinance, the second one, item 51, it also states that there should be some kind of screening to prevent the bees from flying into, you know, a neighbor's area, as well as placement of the hive, so that the direct travel out of the hive isn't towards the neighbor's general walking, working area and that sort of thing. So.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Alderman Jerry Wright, thank you very much.
Carla, I know this is an item 51, but we have the license. If you go to item 6.20, suspension revocation of license, item four says a citizen, and it's singular. Complaints about the licensee's hobby beekeeping operation demonstrate that the public's health, safety, and welfare will be served by suspension revocation of the license. I would assume that if we have a person that is susceptible to apelptic shop, is that the right word for it? Thank you. Whatever that word is, reflect that in the minutes, that they can file, that this should be grounds enough for it to be revoked, right? It's public safety.
Yeah, that is, you're talking about the draft provision concerning a license. Yeah, I think that would be one of the ways to address what Councilman Estes was talking about.
So someone, let's say someone has bees, and all of a sudden, some, their neighbor finds out that their child or someone's susceptible, that's grounds enough to take care of it, if the risk ever occurs, or if they live in the place and someone moves in wants to start, it's the same thing, correct? So it's singular, a citizen, not group of citizens, not multiple complaints. But if they show that there's a safety or public health issue related, it can be pulled, correct?
Well, it does say citizen complaints. So that does imply, I guess, two, multiple complaints. But yes, that would be one.
Let's take the S off. If that's necessary. But I think it says there that we can, it can happen. Thank you.
If there is a license required, yep.
Any further discussion on item 50? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item 51.
Item 51, first reading of ordinance 6010, an ordinance to regulate hobby beekeeping by adopting chapter 6.20 of the Rapid Municipal Code. Move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Laurenti. And before we go to the council lights, which now there are three, Carl, I think we need to probably clarify the license provision. It's been, it's not included in item 51, but it is linked to the agenda if the council would choose to, to include it. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And it wasn't, it wasn't included for basically two reasons. One, it was inconsistent with the fact that we had repealed the pigeon license. We didn't have a pigeon license. So adding a new license was something that the council would need to consider. And secondly, the beekeepers didn't, did not want a license. So if you want to have a license, it's right in front of you. It's also linked into the, linked into the agenda. Somebody would need to offer a motion to add it in, and it would need to be discussed. So. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Carla a question?
Me.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I was going to make an amendment to this. Carla, the amendment that I'm considering making, if I come back around to this, is to, I believe the language in the ordinance for item number 51 states that it is suggested or recommended to put in the flight weights from the beehives to protect the neighbors as well as protecting the hives. I am considering, and I would welcome any colleague to make the amendment motion, to make that a requirement. I think that would protect the hive as well as protecting the neighbors to actually have a requirement to put in that flight path for the bees so that they do not fly into a crowded area or the next-door neighbor's garage or the next-door neighbor's, you know, yard. So putting in that provision, I believe Carla researched this, and the provision in a lot of other cities require like a wall or that screening that was brought up, something to allow the bees a flight path to get out before they start collecting their nectar and stuff. So again, I started speaking before I made that amendment, but I would, I would very highly support that amendment. In regards to, and Carla, sorry, my question was, isn't it recommended currently? It's not required, the way it's written.
Right. There is a requirement generally that the back of the hive face away from the closest property line or right-of-way. But if that screening is provided, then that placement can be different. So that's the only way that, that's the only other provision that talks about the screening. If you have the screening, you can face the hive whatever direction you want because it addresses the same concern. But generally, the screening is just a recommendation.
And I would support, and if I have to buzz back in, I would recommend that that amendment be made to this to make that a requirement. And then, Mayor, if I could, just to comment on this beekeeping draft or license draft, I believe that the beekeepers already have to register their aperries, if I'm saying that right, with the state. So in my mind, they're already being tracked by the state. And as we all know, bee is very, very important to the agricultural and horticulture of our area. So I feel comfortable knowing that they're already registered at the state, and they do have to file. So I'm okay with not including the amendment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Mayor, if it's all right, I'll make that motion, that amendment that Alderman Scott is suggesting.
Carla, can you help articulate the amendment as you understand the debate?
Instead of, Carla, it is, what I'm hearing is you're making the recommendation by the ordinance currently. If we just remove the word recommendation, that might satisfy most of it.
Yeah, it currently says hobby beekeepers are encouraged to use screening. I wish I would have brought in some of the other examples that I looked at, because I know they specified the height of the screening and when it was appropriate.
How about we have it available for second reading? Fair?
Yeah, that's fine with me. That's fine with me, if you are okay.
Just direct staff to authorize, help me out.
It's not necessary. We'll bring, we'll bring, we understand the, what's needed. And Carla will bring back an amendment that would need to be added in at legal and finance. Any further discussion? Alderman Jerry Wright.
I suspect I support the licensing simply because of the safety issues. Otherwise, I'd support not doing it, but I think we should have it in there. Thank you.
Now, you know it's not in there, did you want to make a motion to put it in? Let's go to.
Yes, I will make a motion to do that.
I'll go ahead and allow that. Is there a second to amend item 51, ordinance 6010, to include the licensing provision that's linked to the agenda in draft form? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Nordstrom. We're now open for a discussion on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Jerry Wright.
I just want to go back to that point that Brad brought up, that the, what is the provision we have in case someone wants to change anything? And as far as I know, this is the only place that I've seen it where someone can issue a situation or a complaint and have their, have the thing rectified. That's why I'm supporting it. And it's in that section 6.20, suspension or revocation of license, item four, which says a citizen complaints. And I'd even say that a, when you get technical, citizen complaint about the license hobby, as long as it proves as decorative to the health and safety, take the plural off, complaints. That's why I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Alderman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Carla Kushman, if I may.
Please.
Thank you. So I just try to understand this, that the original ordinance, not this provision, would allow code enforcement to obviously enforce these ordinances. If we were to put in the licensing provision, then that responsibility would fall on animal control?
Well, yes, I think so. I think it falls within the boundaries of our MOU with the Humane Society. I did speak with the Humane Society months ago when we were talking about this, and they were, they were willing to perform in that capacity to issue the licenses and to issue or to perform any inspections and to work with, well, and to respond to any complaints about it, likely working with the beekeepers, as I think has happened in the past. So I think that, I haven't spoken with the Humane Society today since this kind of all came up again, but I believe that that they would be willing to perform in that capacity.
Okay. And then the other question is, based on some of the discussion prior on 20, or 6013, that probably should have fallen here. Could we think about or find anything to support or just give some more information, since it just came up tonight, about adding in the provision on the suspension or revocation of a license that has to do with a situation where a neighborhood is not governed by an active or a formed HOA? So that if somebody came in and showed those covenants, said, hey, this is going on, it is governed by covenants, just to give some kind of, I guess, palatable cushion of acceptance out there.
Well, like Joel said, you know, if you're going to require a license, you know, we could put in a, we already have a requirement in there that you need to, that the beekeeper needs to comply with all state regulation and any applicable rules. We could add in that they need to also comply with any covenant restrictions that are on their property. I, yeah, I guess, we're not, that's not something that we normally get involved in, like Joel mentioned, but that could be added, I think.
At least just give it some more thought. I'm just really trying to balance out property rights and people being able to do what they want on their property within reasonable limits, obviously. And just the, perhaps, public perception of what that might mean if that's happening within the neighborhood or next door. So I'm just trying to figure out different ways that we might be able to balance that out. Thank you for fielding my questions.
Alderman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, the reason I'm not in support of a current licensed Carla is that by the beekeepers registering their aperries with the state at this time, we, the, anybody who has a complaint, whether it's a swarm or a question about being a nuisance on their property, they already have a recourse to go to code enforcement that would eventually go to the city attorney's office, because public safety is paramount in Rapid City. And so without putting this license specifically for these bees, it doesn't mean that we're throwing public safety out the window. Is that correct?
Well, you're right. I mean, even if we don't go with a license option, there are legal mechanisms we can address problems with. One is a criminal complaint if there's a violation of the ordinance. Another is the nuisance provision that you've discussed. I think the licensing provision is just another mechanism to address problems should they arise. But we have other options, like you discussed.
Thank you. That's the reason that I'm okay not adding a license at this point, because I believe it's already covered. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder, we're debating whether or not to amend this ordinance to include licensing provisions. We'll now go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be clear with that, if we have a license in place, let's go over to animal control. And if there's no license, then it goes into code enforcement.
I think so. The way that the Humane Society MOU is drafted, it's really the licensing that they do of our dogs and cats that kind of gives them the money, that gives them the jurisdiction, I guess, over it. Otherwise, there's, I mean, they might be called because they might have a bee person who's, actually, one of their officers has a awareness of bees and knowledge of bees. So they might be called, but it would go through code enforcement if there isn't a license. That's, that's, that's what I think would occur.
I understand that. I am beginning suggestions here. So I'll try to refrain from that suggestion. The one, one point that the local news media made a comment about is that if a neighbor complains that a bee colony is a nuisance, the city should take. the city should make it clear that it will move swiftly. Now, is there a better response process using animal shelter versus code enforcement?
You mean, in terms of quickness?
Correct. A swift response is how the Rapid City Journal pointed it out.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm not sure what the, whether or not code enforcement moves quicker than Humane Society. I think Joel might know.
Take you out. I'll yield to the city attorney, Joel.
The one thing I'll say is, it has nothing to do with code enforcement versus the Humane Society. With a license, I think you can have quicker enforcement because it's easier to pull somebody's license than it is to file charges or, or file a proceeding on a nuisance or, or file court action. I mean, there's remedies without a license, but the remedies are probably slower than the remedies you would have with a license.
Thank you. That helps.
Alderman Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're on the amendment, aren't we?
We're on the amendment.
Yeah, okay, so I was going to talk about the covenants thing, so I'll wait, I guess. We're back to a vote to that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. What, are we going on the amendment, or what? Okay, so I guess in that case, then, as far as the covenants thing go, I'm rethinking this and thinking a little deeper into it. I don't think we want to become the legal aid for the entire city every time they have a coveted issue, so probably not the best idea, because all kinds of covenant issues come up before the city and people don't want to hire an attorney. If we open the door, we're probably asking for trouble, so I like the idea, but there's a lot of other things we could probably get stepping into if I think about it a little more. So I just want to make that point.
Alderman Ron Weifenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beekeepers are lucky you're not trying to raise chickens. I have a question for, I mean, the licensing thing to me is nonsensical. Just for the simple fact that we're not going to enforce it. It's just the reality of it. It's not going to happen. When you sit up here, people of Rapid City probably don't even know they're required to have a license for their dog or their cat. The money doesn't go to the Humane Society for the, for licensing a dog or a cat. Am I correct?
No, it does, under the MOU with the Humane Society.
Must have just changed that then recently, because it never had before. But it's never enforced, needless to say. I mean, I moved from my, my house because my neighbor's dark and barking dog had no license. I mean, we're probably barking up the wrong tree with these bees. I think that when you look at bees and you look at chickens, you're looking at a more, a typical group of people that are going to be more responsible than most homeowners, because you're not going to go out and buy a $100,000 swarm of beehive and put it in your backyard. I mean, it just ain't going to happen. I mean, so I, I can't support this amendment in any way, shape, or form. I think that if we look at it, we'll address the problem when we get to it. And then to put the load on the Humane Society, they can't even handle the load they got. It's nonsensical to me. So, thank you.
We'll go to our city attorney, Joel Landine. Okay. Alderman Jerry Wright?
I'm going to respectfully disagree with Ron. I have heard the discussion that code enforcement versus the licensing option, which would be under animal control, the response time would be much quicker under animal control and their licensing option. And I think that, we all know that in code enforcement, they have requirements and there's letters and time, and it takes a lot longer than probably would be desired in a situation where there's potentially public safety or there's a bee sting or something that could cause a problem. All we're saying is in the licensing fee, excuse me, licensing option, a citizen complaint can trigger, under the licensing option, corrective action to eliminate a public safety issue way quicker, because if you're using an animal control officer, they'll show up on weekends at night or whatever. Versus code enforcement's going to, if it go that way, a code violation or an ordinance violation is going to require letters and time. The response time is just not going to be the same. So I, that's why I support the licensing. Thank you.
Alderman Brad Estes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure about this license deal. I'm not sure all those bees will fly wearing a tag, so, you know, and we've got this city designated animal control authority, and I assume that that's the animal shelter. And, and this was just written today.
I had drafted it as part of an ordinance some time ago. Actually, I talked with the beekeepers about it months ago, so I just pulled it off of one of the old versions.
Here's where I, I'm in a position tonight to not support the license. I am going to probably support the, the main ordinance, but, but I do, I do, between first and second reading, I would like to figure out, because code enforcement doesn't work on weekends, and I, I guess I do have a little bit of concern on how, if, if something would happen, how we could respond in a swift manner. And I, you know, and I, and I do, I'm kind of in between Jerry and Ron. I, I think the animal shelter is, is extremely busy trying to keep up with the, the dog and the cat issues we have in the county and the city, so I guess that's where I'm at. I'm not going to support the license amendment tonight, but I will support the ordinance as a whole. Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to proceed to a vote on the amendment regarding adding the licensing provision in. This is a vote on the amendment only. All in favor of amending the ordinance to include the license, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Scott? Drew? Lewis? Doyle? Wright? Estes? Nordstrom? Roberts? Weifenbach? Laurenti? Two to eight. Fails.
Just so everybody knows, that I was, the reason I was laughing because an unnamed council member made a buzzing sound during the vote, so. All right, we are now, now to the, now to the motion, to the underlying motion. Any further discussion?
Mayor, just to include that, that city staff is going to take a look at changing that language to requirement rather than just a recommendation.
And you're going to bring that forward as a possible amendment next week at Legal and Finance?
Sure.
Okay, so we don't need a, we don't need a motion for that? Okay. Any further discussion on Item 51? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good discussion. Item 52?
Item 52 is a request by Advance Engineering for TJ Antonowitz for preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots 1 through 32 of Block 7 of Parks Hill subdivision, generally described as being located east of Internet section of Hofer Avenue and Churchill Street. I move approval with a stipulations.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 53?
53 is a request by Spurly Consulting for Inc. for Paul and Lori Sausser for preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots 7A, 7B of Block 1 of Eastern Acre subdivision, generally described as being located at 54, 5846 Longview Road. I move approval with stipulations.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 54 is a request by Renner and Associates LLC for preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots 3 and 4 of Block 2, lots 2 and 1 and 2 of Block 3 for Heartland Retail Center, generally described as being located 4145 Cheyenne Boulevard. I move approval with stipulations.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Drew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 55? Charity Doyle?
Item number 55 is a request from Henrickson Inc. for TM Holdings LLC for a variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk per city ordinance 12.08.060 along Dias Avenue for 2509 Dias Avenue, Lot 4, North Star subdivision. I will make a motion to, that's not my motion, Mr. Wright. My motion would be to waive the requirement and accept the warp.
Second.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Lewis to waive, to rate, waive the requirement and accept the warp. Did I state that?
Warp.
The warp, the waiver of right to protest. It's basically to approve the applicant's request. And that's a second by Lewis. Any discussion? Alderman Ron Weifenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, did you, did you want the floor?
I'm sorry, I did, yes.
Well, let's, let's go back to Alderman Doyle.
Thank you.
The floor. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to explain why I made that motion, as I understand the paperwork. And if Public Works would like to chime in, I would welcome that if Mayor's okay with it. My understanding is it's only because there was a fire that, now that they're reconstructing and fixing all of that damage, that the, this is what triggered the sidewalk? And that they have plans to put this in for next year. Is that, is that accurate?
The first part was accurate, the second part was not accurate. It was a fire at the building up there. That's why they pulled the permit to reconstruction. I'm not sure the full extent of the building reconstruction is going on, but as far as, if you approve this variance request, the sidewalk will not be installed. We are doing a grading project and we are putting the three-lane urban section roadway up there. So the city, and that, that work will be happening next summer. So if you grant the variance, the sidewalk will not be installed until such time as the city orders the sidewalk in on Dias Avenue.
So is it fair to say that if you're going to be doing work, then the sidewalk they will have installed could potentially be torn up and have to be reinstalled?
That would be correct. Actually, the staff's recommendation was that they'd be allowed to post a surety and install the sidewalk once our grading work is done on the project.
Okay. I'll yield for now.
Floor has been yielded. We'll go to Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my, my, my question was, what was the plan if they hadn't had a fire? For fire sidewalk? If it wasn't a fire there, how, how are we going to get the sidewalk in there without the fire? If the fire hadn't occurred, because it wasn't required when they built the place, correct? We didn't require them, we didn't require them to install a sidewalk at the time construction? So what, what was our plan if they hadn't been unfortunate enough to have a fire?
If I could, Mayor, I would say that really the rest of the buildings on Dias Avenue that are already in place, really those sidewalks will not be installed until, until such time as they pull a building permit that's of a size large enough to require the sidewalk or until the city council orders the sidewalks in on Dias Avenue.
My, my question was, though, is part of their agreement when this house, when this place was built, they were not required to install a sidewalk along that area, correct?
I don't know the history as far as the timeline and when the building was, was constructed or if it was...
I just don't want to penalize people for having a fire. That's my biggest, I mean, it's not their fault they had a fire, hopefully. And I'm not, I'm speaking to, I'm guessing, but I just think it's kind of, I understand we need a sidewalk, now we got to penalize them because they had a fire and they didn't have a, put the sidewalk initially. That's my, my point here, I guess. I'll yield the floor.
Alderman Jerry Wright?
Jerry, I assume what it says, when it says variance to wa, to the warp, they, they want to be accepted and not have to honor a warp or sign a warp, so is that what this is about?
I, I don't want to speak for the applicant. I assume they probably would not have a problem signing a warp. They just don't want to install the sidewalk at this time or, or at such time as our road construction work is done.
I guess the variance, it says for a variance to warp. Is that right?
No, the var, it's a variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk. That's what they're requesting. You, you as a council have several options. You can require them to install the sidewalk prior to a CO on the building. I would not recommend that, because we're going to tear it out when we do the road construction project. You could require them to post a surety and come back and install the sidewalk once the grading work is done. That's kind of where the staff landed as far as our recommendation. The last recommendation would be to award their variance, not require the sidewalk at this time, ask them to sign a warp, and then at such time as the city council deems it's necessary to order sidewalk in on Dias Avenue, we can order sidewalk in on all the property owners out there. That's also not such a bad plan either.
I tend to, to ask them to sign a warp. That's different than what I was going to do it saying. I think, I have no problem, I think they may not if they're, until this highway or road is rebuilt and it's appropriate time to install, I think that would be acceptable to me.
Right now, the motion is to allow the applicant's request and not have them sign a warp. Alderman Ron Weifenbach?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate staff's position on this, because over the years, what's happened is we waived these sidewalks and we waived these sidewalks, and then eventually, guess who puts them in? So, well, I understand the fact that if the building burnt down and then, and then we're going to tear it up, it doesn't make any sense to have them build it right away. Now with a warp, Mr. Mayor, can I request...
We have some side chatter going on, so one, one person at a time. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about the warp. If we require a warp after they finish the road, can't we just order the sidewalk in at that point? Right. If we have the warp, that, that would be the case, or?
You can, let's go to Terry Walters, Dorf.
Thank you, Mayor. We, you don't need a warp to order the sidewalk. You, you as a city council can order sidewalk in on any property in Rapid City if you deem it necessary. The, the warp really is there more, really to put the property owner and future property owners on notice that, that, hey, we may, we may request this at a future date. But in reality, even if you don't order or request a warp as part of this and six months from now you change your mind and order sidewalk in, you can do that.
Right. I understand that part. I just thought it would be more user-friendly if we had a warp, and then if the property changed hands, that warp would go with that property. So I guess that would be another question. I'm pretty sure it does, but to, I guess, to Terry or to Joel? Does that warp go with the property if we have them sign a warp?
Yes, it does.
So I'd, I'd be interested if somebody wanted to make an amendment to have a warp, because if we don't have something in place to have that sidewalk built, it won't get built without a big ruckus trying to make it happen. And it is a requirement, you know, for new buildings and stuff to have the sidewalks. So I appreciate staff's stance on this, because, I mean, in the past, a lot of the times they just overlooked it and the council just overrode it, and now we have no sidewalks in a lot of areas that probably should have them. So, thank you.
Alderman Ritchie-Nordstrom?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in the favor of the, doing the, the warp, but I just need a little...
Go ahead and make the amendment, then, if you want.
Okay. Make the amendment to require a warp for the, for this area.
We have a second? We'll just take it as an amendment. So we have a, an amendment to the motion on the floor by Nordstrom and a second by Weifenbach. And Ritchie, you have the floor to discuss the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a whole bunch of other side issues that are going on as far as, I'm going to refer specifically to a walk audit that we just completed. And we've gotten a partial report on that walk audit, and it looks also at requiring more sidewalks in. And I couldn't help but support Alderman Weifenbach on his contention that we need to put some more sidewalks in and addressing these warps in a little better fashion, because in my mind, we don't have a real good plan of putting in sidewalks, and this comes the closest to a, a plan, so let's get the sidewalk put in at some appropriate time. And let's, it just needs it up there. Thank you.
So we are dealing now with the amendment to the motion to include a warp, a waiver of right to protest. We'll go to Alderman Brad Estes, discuss the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I will support this amendment, that they, once it gets the building done, they can get occupancy once they, provide they sign a warp. I, I think that's the right way to do it, so there's mutual covenants between the two parties that they acknowledge that they're going to be looked at to put that sidewalk in. I look at ordering sidewalk in to be more global, you know, neighborhood. You know, if you've got a neighborhood where you got, you know, and there's just a hodgepodge, some people have sidewalks, some don't, and you do a whole neighborhood deal and then you order it in to try to get everybody on board. But, you know, I don't like the idea of just picking one property owner, owner and doing a, ordering sidewalk in. So, you know, I would hope that we would not enforce this warp until such time that there, there were neighboring properties and, and, you know, there was, you know, a sidewalk, kind of a sidewalk system going in, but I, I definitely support the amendment, having them sign a, delaying the project, delaying the sidewalk, but contingent upon them signing a warp. Thanks.
We will now proceed to the vote on the amendment. Any further discussion? All in favor of the amendment to add a warp, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now back to the amended motion. Any further discussion on the amended motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion. We are now on Items 56 through 82. I do not have any speaker request forms on 56... through eighty-two. I do not have any speaker request forms on fifty-six through eighty-two. Have I missed anyone? Anybody like to remove any items for separate consideration? Counsel or staff? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve all of these items?
Aye.
We have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number eighty-three, and before we get in, this is a very rare motion, doesn't happen very often. I do remember a couple of these from my time on, on the council, since I, I have used this myself in the past, although it doesn't come up very often. And what we're going to do here is we get a motion on the floor to deliver the item from committee. We're not going to spend time discussing whether or not to have a discussion. The motion needs a second, and if the motion has a simple majority vote, then the committee will be required, the legal and finance committee in this case, will be required to deliver the ordinance with a recommendation. And they can bring forward a recommendation to approve, a recommendation to deny, a recommendation to amend, or a recommendation to table, but they, they have to bring it to the council in two weeks for the council to take the final action. The committee will be bound to then bring forward a recommendation, whatever recommendation they want, but they have to bring it to the council. Does everyone understand the procedure?
So moved.
Okay, we, do we have a, a motion to deliver this item from committee?
So moved.
We have a motion by Wright, and do we have a second by Laurenti? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so this item will be back on the legal and finance agenda next week, and then it will be coming one way or another to the council in two weeks. Thank you. We're now on item number eighty-four. Do we have a motion to continue item eighty-four until May eighteen? We have a, a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing was open, now it is closed for item eighty-four. We're now on items eighty-five through eighty-seven. These are consent public hearing item count, items. Public hearing is open. Do not have any speaker request forms. Public hearing is now closed. We have a motion to approve these items. We have a, we have a motion by, okay, we have, we have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Lewis to approve items eighty-five through eighty-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list, Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is before you at six million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, three dollars and ten cents.
We have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Drew, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nine oh two PM, we are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.